We got a new system, so I'm cross your fingers. We're live? All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 25th, 2025. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of the Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Smith to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flags. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the blessings of life. We ask you to gather and protect our assembly today. Give us the wisdom of the sermon to make the decisions that are right that would follow the direction that you would have been. We ask all this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. We have Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Smith, Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from March 11th, 2025, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Nobody signed it. Anybody wish to speak? Come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Zane Tinsley. I live at, on Prybor Road 2576 in Quinlan. I've been a fireman in Hunt County for about six years. In that six years, I've responded to many calls. My goal has always been to provide the highest level of service to the citizens of Hunt County. My former chief and biggest mentor has always said that the citizens deserve Chick-fil-A levels of service. That being said, that was not, that was not given when it mattered most. On July 14th of 2020, a structure fire happened on County Road 2277. Two people were trapped inside the residence. Quinlan Fire Department did not attempt to rescue upon arrival unseen. Two people died in that fire that could have been saved. On March 5th, 2025, a very similar event unfolded on North Shore Road. This time with three people trapped, this time three lives were lost. There is an excuse on both fires, and that was safety. Safety is a hot topic in the fire service. At a certain point, you do have to cut your losses, so you don't die. However, firefighting is an inherently dangerous job. It will never be safe. The way we keep firefighters safe is through training, proper funding, cancer prevention, a multitude of other ways. A firefighter that knows what they are doing is the safest person on the fire ground. We don't accomplish safety by deciding citizens' fate from the front yard. We don't accomplish safety by refusing to make entry to house fires. Our departments preach "Close before you doze," and that does save lives. However, a key part of that is a fire department willing to make entry, a fire department that will do everything that they can to occupy the interior of the structure and remove victims. Our citizens deserve better. Our citizens do not deserve underfunded, undertrained, lazy, and overly safe fire departments. This fire was not a suicide mission. It was a bread and butter offensive fire with two people trapped, or sorry, three people trapped inside. At least two of those people were found in searchable space. Had any other fire department been in their shoes, at least two people could have been saved. Roughly 3,000 people die every year in house fires. Our job as firefighters is to save them, whether we're career or volunteer. To have multiple cases of people dying mere feet from the front door is absolutely unacceptable. Quinlan Fire Department has refused to learn their lessons from the past. They refuse to change, and it's time to hold them accountable. I urge this court to terminate their contract with the Quinlan Fire Department for both fire and EMS. An outside consultant is pointless. You're wasting taxpayer money to be told the same thing that firefighters in this county have been telling you for years. Additionally, the current issue at hand needs to be addressed immediately, not swept to the side and attention deflected to hiring a consultant. Otherwise, more people will continue to suffer. Probation and cut funding has proven to not work. It's time to remove the cancer and give their territory to fire departments that will actually do the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Being none, I'll close the public testimony. No old business. Commissioners, we have the consent calendar under new business. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under B, action items. Approval of accounts payable?
Approve. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month of April 2025. Lori, do you want to say anything? You want to read? Would you like to read the proclamation, or have some of your people read it, whatever you want to do?
Perfect. So I'm Lori Cope. I'm the Executive Director of Casa for Hunt County.
And I'm Larry Barxdale. I'm a faith-based and community engagement specialist for Child Protective Services.
And I'm Amy Ramsey with the Hunt County Children's Advocacy Center, Director of Community Outreach and Education.
So whereas last year in the United States, there were 372,613 confirmed victims of child abuse, whereas in Texas, there were 9,506 children whose abuse was confirmed, which is 26 confirmed instances of child abuse each day. Whereas in Texas, and throughout the nation, there are many individuals and agencies who are working to prevent child abuse, to raise awareness about child abuse, and to help the victims.
Whereas in 2024, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services became involved with tens of thousands of children and their families due to allegations and confirmed cases of child abuse or neglect. Whereas in 2024, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services investigated 59,817 allegations of abuse and neglect of children, resulting in 40,416 children and their families being referred to family-based safety services without the state taking custody of the children. Whereas in 2024, a total of 3,852 children in Texas were removed from their homes and placed into the care and custody of the state, otherwise known as foster care.
Whereas last year in Texas, there were a combined total of 28,008 child abuse victims in the legal care of the state for their own protection. Whereas in 2024, Hunt County's child protective investigations engaged in 674 allegations involving Hunt County children and their families, resulting in 245 of these children and their families being referred to family-based safety services without taking state custody of the children. Whereas in 2024, close to 60 Hunt County children were removed from their homes and entered into the care and custody of the state, otherwise known as foster care, served by the state's community care-based, based care and contractor in power. Whereas the total number of Hunt County children in the care and custody of the state was 133 children in 2024.
Whereas in 2024 in Texas, there was a total of 7,457 court-appointed special advocates, or CASA volunteers, who are assigned by the court to speak up for a child's best interest. Whereas last year, CASA volunteers involved with one of the 74 CASA programs in Texas advocated for 18,208 children in the foster care system, giving 552,378 million volunteer hours to serve these children. Whereas in Hunt County, CASA is appointed by the courts to serve 100% of the county's children who enter the foster care system. Whereas last year, CASA for Hunt County advocated for 133 of the county's children in crisis. Whereas in 2024, CASA for Hunt County volunteer advocates logged 13,804 hours of casework and traveled 61,029 miles in order to serve the children in which they are appointed, saving Hunt County taxpayers about $427,924 with volunteer advocate services.
Whereas the Children's Advocacy Center, or the CAC, is the front door for the child abuse investigation process to provide a collaborative response to children impacted by abuse. Whereas last year in Texas, 70 children's advocacy centers across the state served close to 65,000 children, with 45% between the ages of six and 12 years old. Whereas in 2024, approximately every 15 hours, there was a confirmed case of child sexual abuse in Hunt County. Whereas 98% of the children, child victims, knew their alleged perpetrator. Whereas every child through the CAC has a chance for their voice to be heard and the healing process to begin. And in Hunt County, CAC staff and volunteers served 700 children last year.
Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Texas, whereas children thrive in safe, stable, nurturing families within their own local community.
Whereas while it is critical to build a system that supports families when they are in crisis, it is extremely important to support families before they are in crisis in order to prevent the abuse and maltreatment of Texas children. Whereas child abuse prevention cannot be tasked to one community, agency, or system, all Texans must work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible, contribute to the well-being of the entire community, and keep children and families safe together. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote preventative efforts. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families.
So whereas CASA for Hunt County, Hunt County Children's Advocacy Center, Hunt County's Department of Family Protective Services, Community Based Care Contractor in Power, Child Welfare Collaborative Agencies, foster parents, teachers, counselors, attorneys, judges, county leaders, civic organizations, churches, and every member of Hunt County shall work to safeguard that our county's children have the opportunity to thrive and to grow up in a safe, loving, permanent home. Now, therefore, we ask that Bobby Stovall, County Judge for Hunt County, and the Hunt County Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month in Hunt County, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank y'all. Thank you for what you do. All of the child advocacy and the CASA and then the
CAC.
CAC, I'm sorry, I'm going brain-dead. And Protective Services, you know, I don't know what our kids would do without y'all. And it's a, it's a sad day when we have to have these proclamations and, and understand how much abuse there is and what our kids go through. And thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you, Judge. May we also get a photo?
Sure. Let's, let's get this passed first.
Oh, sure.
Commissioners, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let's get, get a photograph. All right. Action item number two, Senior Center Resource and Public Transit is requesting $19,500 from Hunt County to provide milk to our seniors for three months due to the dramatic decrease in state and federal funding. Katrina, you want to come forward and brief us?
Good morning, Honorable Judge Stovall and Honorable Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I come before you on behalf of hundreds of at-risk seniors in Hunt County who rely on Meals on Wheels for their daily nutrition. Right now, 1 in 6 in our county faces food insecurity, many of them isolated without family support and struggling to afford basic necessities. Nearly 70% of our meal recipients depend on our program as their primary source of nutrition, and 82% of those live below the poverty line. For them, fresh food, something as simple as a half a gallon of milk, is out of reach. But we're facing a crisis. Our state and federal funding has been slashed from 1.4 million to 545,000, a devastating cut of more than 60%. As a result, we have had to make heartbreaking decisions at our agency. Our emergency night and weekend meals ended immediately in early September 2024 when we were notified of these cuts, and our milk distribution program ended in January 2025. These cuts mean that some of our most vulnerable seniors are now going without the nutrition they need desperately. To bridge the gap, we've launched the Meals That Matter campaign and Milk Matters campaigns to raise $100,000 to ensure no senior goes hungry. We have hosted and will continue to host our annual fundraisers, rallying our community's support to keep this mission alive. Additionally, we are actively seeking grants, and we are optimistic that some will reopen as early as summer 2025. However, our seniors need help now. Today, we are asking for your support. A $19,500 allocation from the court would provide, provide fresh milk to our seniors for three months, giving the, giving them a critical source of vitamins and minerals that we otherwise, otherwise wouldn't have access to, and allowing our agency to continue to raise funding through fundraising and grants. This is more than meals. It's about dignity, independence, and the well-being of those who spent their lives building our community. We have a responsibility to, to ensure they can age with the nutrition and respect they deserve. I encourage you to stand with us in this fight against hunger. Together, we can all make a difference.
Thank you. Commissioners, you got any questions?
So I, I certainly get your calls, and I think that's an easy part for everybody. I'm curious, you're chasing grants and things on the future. If, if that doesn't come available, I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of competition for those. Are there other alternatives? I know you're asking for something now. What's the future look like if the grants aren't there?
Hopefully, we'll have more funding available when the next fiscal year rolls around. And just private donations, that, that's all that we can depend on. We're a nonprofit. So if it's not grants and funding from the county and our other municipalities in Hunt County, then, you know, we won't be able to provide the milk, unfortunately.
So you're thinking state and federal funds might be available next fiscal cycle?
We're hoping. We are fighting for that. We are talking to representatives. We are talking to congressmen. We are talking to senators. I spent two days in, at Hunt County days, visiting with many of our leaders in Hunt County, and we are pushing for that. But we all know that's a process.
So is it state or federal funds, or both that you?
It's both. So the federal funding comes from the Older Americans Act. That's where the federal funding comes from, and then that is trickled down to the state level to Area Agency on Aging and Texas Council of Governments, which specifically are Title 3B, 3C, and Title 20. That's where our money from the state comes from. Title 3B is a match grant, so whatever we get, we have to match that from the state. So that's a, you know, that's, that's another issue. You have to have the money to match that, which we do. We keep a very healthy reserve, but we're required to do that because of our transportation side of our agency as well through text dot.
Anybody else?
How many, how many people do y'all serve?
We, we are currently serving 750 Hunt County clients. We have about 620 on our meal, what we call home-delivered meals. The public knows it as Meals on Wheels. And then we have three, well, actually, we have four congregate sites now. We have Greenville, Wolf City, Commerce, and Tewocany, and we're now serving about 130 through those congregate sites.
Curious, just for educational purposes, on the 19-5, is that, is that just to get your funding levels up to a point where you can afford the milk, or does it go into a separate pot, or how does that?
So that will just provide the milk.
Okay.
That will just provide the milk. That would afford us milk for three months.
Gotcha.
For those seniors.
Got a milk contractor line item or something?
No.
Gotcha.
And, and I have put out emails and, and tried to work with, I've, I've contacted the Dairy Association and Sulphur Springs, of course, even though it's supposed to be, you know, the state, it's, well, we're in Hopkins County. You know, you just kind of get some pushback. We've also put out, I've, you know, had some contacts with other dairies and just waiting to hear back from them. As you know, since we are a nonprofit, we do have to go out for, once we have a contractor for the milk, we do have to go out for contracts. So we do work to see who has the best bid for milk. Does that make sense?
Well, I know that, you know, my wife and I went out and delivered clothes, and some of the people, where they live, I mean, there was roads in my four-wheel-drive SUV I wouldn't go down, because I didn't think we'd get back out.
And our employees are going down those roads every day to get meals, and they're parking at the end of the road and walking.
Walking in, yeah. Wow. It's just unreal how poor some of our people are that need help.
I, may I say one more thing?
Sure.
Judge. Yesterday, I asked one of my Meals on Wheels drivers that she delivers in South Hunt County, I said, I need, who would you recommend, you know, for a quote that I can give to the Commissioners' Court tomorrow? Or I said, what is your feedback that you're getting about the milk? And she just looked at me and she said, they just want it back. They just want the milk back. So I'm going to be honest, when we, I knew, when we found out about these cuts and Danny let us know, I thought it would be the emergency meals that they miss the most. It hasn't been. It's been the milk. But when you think about it, the milk provides them also dinner. A lot of these people are individuals that are living alone. They're seniors that are living alone, so that provides them a bowl of cereal at night and a bowl of cereal in the morning. So you think a half a gallon of milk, what's the big deal? It's a big deal to a senior. And if you're like me and you're aging, you get that, because you, I eat a bowl of cereal a lot at night, so. Any more questions?
Thank you for, thank you for all you do over there.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank y'all. And, and I do want to say thank y'all for your continued support. We couldn't do what we do without the support of, of the Commissioners' Court.
Thank you. Commissioners, I make a motion. We make the contribution out of, I guess we'll need to take it out of contingency and capital improvement account. Mary, you're Stacy's that old, or does it need to come somewhere, another place we could get it?
Well, we have to move the money. Yes, sir. Have to come from.
From that? Is that, that's as good as any, huh?
You can move it from there, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I make that as a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And Judge, real quick, a point, a clarification for the auditor. Since we'll move that money, it'll, it'll need to be transferred at the next meeting, or approved, or are we, are we approved it?
Yeah, so it'll be two weeks out.
Okay.
But I'm not sure how they're going, how you're going to give them a check, if you're going to create an invoice, or how that's going to work.
Yeah, we probably need an invoice from them, for y'all's purposes. Yeah. That along with the court minutes should be sufficient. Yeah. All right. Action item three, Treasury's Monthly Report for January 2025. Brittany?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. In your package, you will see your month-end report for January 31st, 2025. We have a month-end balance of $69,837,775.3. This is in cash and invested funds. The auditors and treasurer's books agree, and all of the bank reconciliations have been balanced. To note, in January, we received most of our funding on the very last day of December, so we did a lot of our moving to investments in the month of January. Out of our almost $70 million balance, we have about $50 million invested, with about 10 invested in January alone, moving that tax money that we got in in January, so that it can grow interest in your respective accounts. And the rates are still hovering around 4.5% and everything a little bit, 4.3, 4.5.
Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item four, to appoint David Monroe as board member of the Quinlan Tax Increment and Reinvestment Zone, or TERZ. Don't see John's making this recommendation. John Adele, he's not here. I certainly am fully supportive of David. I'd entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number five, discuss and possibly take action to approve disbursement from the Capital Improvement Fund of Roden Bridge Precincts. Mark?
Yes, Judge, thank you. Sorry about that. I picked a bad time to walk someone over there. Commissioners, we have, as you know, in the past dispersed funds from our Capital Improvement Fund to the Roden Bridge precincts for things like new road upgrades, major repairs, equipment purchase, just to help, help supplement the Roden Bridge budgets that way. We had talked about it some through the last budget process and just chose not to take action on it at that time. So I wanted to put it back on our, our radar here for discussion, to see what, what the pleasure of the court is. I think it would be a good thing for us to, to distribute some of these funds for, for these types of projects I described earlier, but I want to open up the discussion from y'all guys.
Any comments? What are you talking about?
I would, the number I had in mind was 2 million.
Each precinct?
Which would be split four ways, so 500,000 per precinct. Which would be split four ways, so 500,000 per precinct. I mean, if we're open to 2 million each precinct, but no, no, it'd be a total amount of 2 million split equally between the four precincts.
So, still obviously getting new into the whole budgeting process. So, the money that's there, is that not earmarked or planned or anything of that nature?
This would be from the Capital Improvement Contingency line item, so it's not earmarked for a specific purpose at this point.
Now, technically, it was. When it was moved over there two years ago, year and a half ago, we moved 15 millions to Capital Improvement for the construction of the Puddin' Hill Building. But we have buried from that ever since. So, that was the original intent for the Capital Improvement Fund.
Are you out of money in road material, Mark? Is that the problem?
No, sir. Currently, I have a problem with it. I agree, we need money, more money in the precincts, but right now, we're just now getting 50% through the budget. And I look back through people's budgets, precinct one is at 42.7% of the budget spent. They still have 1.127,000, over a million dollars in road improvement. I still have 1,697,000. I'm at 26.8% of my overall budget spent. Precinct three still has 1,265,479 in road materials. They're 44% of their total budget spent. Precinct four, we're at 1,450,974, still left in the road material, and we're, he's 38.9%. I don't think we're far enough down into the budget to start moving money around. And then another problem I have is my precinct's the fastest-growing precinct. It's been the problem child for many years. It's taken in 38, 39% of the revenue for the last, I don't know how many years. It's probably maybe more than that now with the growth that we're having. And we're still splitting the money up equal, 25% each precinct. I have a problem with that. I don't think it's right. I understand maybe moving some of it makes wheels, keep the wheels greased and make the precincts work out. But I think we need to fix the problem of managing the money that we got before we start putting more money into precincts. That's my opinion on it.
Is this something that has to be voted on today? Can it be tabled and we burn another month? We burn another three months to where we get a little further into the spend year?
We can bring it back up at any meeting.
Absolutely. We can bring it up later.
Because I certainly could see, you know, it being a conversation at some point as things happen in need. I don't want it to have to die, but certainly get further in the year and see where we're at.
Sure. That's why I find that the purpose to Commissioner Monroe's statement is, if we're going to, if we want to be able to use these funds for capital improvements that are in the Capital Improvement Fund, precincts, if we're going to plan for it, then we need to know what we can plan on in addition to our regular budget. So, if we don't want to add any to the regular budget, then that's fine. We just won't plan on anything there. But if we are going to use it later on, it's good to plan sooner.
I don't know about the other precincts, but I've got, the rest of my year, we're just now getting into road building season where we're going to start spending the bulk of your money. I've got my money budgeted out for the rest of the six months to the end of the budget to carry me through. I think if nothing else, we need to wait till at least further on in the budget, three more months or whatever, to get toward the end and look at everybody where we're at on that. And then also, I'm over here in my precinct, it's all I can do to keep pothos patched and few repairs. And y'all are over upgrading roads that people don't even live on. I have a problem with that. I have a problem moving money around. That's just, that's where I'm at.
No action today? Is that all right?
That's fine.
All right. Action item number six, resolution appointing a member to the Development Support Committee. Brian?
So, I have, we've got the Commissioners Court-appointed Development Support Committee that comes to my pre-development meetings and all. They've had some personnel changes and kind of some movement around in the Health Department. So, I'm requesting that we remove Brittany Cooper from the committee and replace her with Joshua Ritchie. He is now the inside liaison at the Health Department, and he's going to be the one who will be coming to the meetings and supporting us through development and septic support.
No other changes?
Removing Kathy Hare in the 911 Coordinator, removing her from, she doesn't come to the meetings. We usually, as we have 911 and GIS issues come up, we address that at a later date instead of having her sit in in the meetings.
And it makes sense. Yeah. All right. Any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item seven, discuss and possibly take action on indigent burial. Aaron, you want to brief us?
Stems from a gentleman passed away March 15, 2025. Just got notified from Judge Money before the meeting began. They were able to locate Next of Kin as incarcerated in Oklahoma. And so, the discounted price was the 4,000 they were asking to approve. I think it's on the agenda. And essentially, they're asking, instead of approving that full amount, give them, approve up to that full amount and give them time to contact Next of Kin. If they're able to contact Next of Kin in Oklahoma incarcerated and get approval for a.
Cremation?
Cremation, it would be able to save the county several thousand dollars. Believe it's less, I believe it's less than a thousand dollars for cremation versus the entire cost for burial.
Yeah. I think the last one we approved was $900 somewhere. It was one of the funeral homes. Yeah. All right. Any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Just for the public to know, we're responsible for doing burials of indigent people, and we do have to go through a process, and this is one of the processes. So, action item number eight, renewal of the 2025, 2026 immunization IMM, local, state, federal, and regional grants for the Hunt County Health Department. Commissioners, entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number nine, to discuss and possibly take action on the hiring of a consultant in regard to volunteer fire departments. David?
First of all, I'd like to say, on behalf of the families that lost life over there in that fire, tragic fire, that was terrible. And our condolences to you. Another thing I'd like to say is, you know, it's easy for anybody to sit back and Monday morning quarterback and say, I do this, I do that, they done this right, they done that wrong. All I'm going to say is, shame on you if you've used this situation to better yourself or to push an agenda or for political gain. Shame on you. And I'm going to leave it at that. Give you a little bit of my background. Years ago, back in the early 90s, I grew up in Wiley. I used to volunteer on the fire department over there before they were, they were still volunteer back then. I was there when we hired the first paid chief. I was there. They initially hired three full-time guys, and now it's developed into a big fire department, several stations. I moved to Hunt County. I served on volunteer fire department in Caddo Mills. Ended up working my way up through the ranks as captain over there. I've been to fire school, put myself through fire school at night on Tuesday and Thursday nights, every other Saturday for over a year. I became state-certified firefighter and EMT. I worked full-time fire department for eight years. I worked at Commerce, and I worked at L-3 Fire Department full-time. Also, for about almost 20 years, I sold fire equipment, rescue equipment. I had Northeast Texas was my sales area. I took care of 19 counties is what I'd served. So, what I'm saying is, I'm just trying to give a little bit of credibility to what I'm going to say and to my fire, I've got a little bit of fire background. I don't know everything, don't claim to, I never will. But this situation that we got, and the reason I brought this to the table is because, like I said, I'm over, I've got the fastest-growing precinct and the fire service over here. It's, the county's growing so much that we've got to do something. And we can sit here, we can come up with ideas, let's do this, let's do that. I told a guy the other day, I was talking to one of the chiefs in Hunt County, and yes, we have a bunch of good guys that volunteer. We have paid guys that work here. But I said, we're going to put us all in a room, we're all going to have a different opinion. We need to do it this way, we need to do it that way. My suggestion was is, let's look at hiring an outside consultant that comes in, that looks at the whole situation, evaluates it all the way from the fire marshal's office all the way down to the volunteers, how we govern them, how much we pay them, and then give us a plan of how to move forward. What do we need to do to make this situation better? And in my opinion, we need an unbiased person to come in that doesn't have anything to gain or anything to lose, and that can give us an honest opinion to move us in the right direction to move forward. And so, that's what, that's what this, I want to put it on the table for, to see what everybody's opinion is on it. We've talked about it for, I've been on the court for a little over two years. We have addressed the fire departments several times. We appreciate the fire departments. We appreciate what they do. Yes, they're limited on manpower, resources, different things. But that's what I want to talk about. How do we move it forward?
So, David, I'd just like to clarify with you on something. So, you're talking about the future of Hunt County Emergency Services?
Yes, sir.
You know, the gentleman that, you know, addressed the court in the beginning, he was talking about specific incident and the issues there right now, conversation about Quinlan. That's not what you're talking about?
No, sir.
You're talking about?
I'm talking about the future for the emergency services of Hunt County is what I, I don't even know how we can really have a honest discussion or opinion on the fire that happened in Quinlan. None of us were there, it's still under investigation, the autopsies aren't back. I mean, I don't even see how you evaluate that, honestly. So, I don't even think we're ready for that discussion.
Well, it certainly seems to me like some of them are trying to take advantage of the situation. There's some of them have been trying to get rid of the Quinlan Fire Department for years, and I don't understand, you know, I do know for a fact that several years ago, maybe four or five years ago, they had a problem. They didn't have enough volunteers. They weren't being responsive. They were creating problems. They fixed that problem. They had some previous volunteers came back to work for them and started volunteering. They rebuilt it. I haven't, the only complaints I hear is everybody pointing fingers at each other in South Hunt County. And, I mean, all of them that want to throw rocks, they can get them thrown right back at them. I mean, there's been a, I've been told of calls of one department telling dispatch, don't call out Quinlan, we're 20 minutes from there, but Quinlan was five minutes from there. So, are they really interested in protecting lives or are they interested in something else? So, I have a problem with all of it. And as we were told last week, you know, we have no legal responsibility to support fire departments. We do, because it's the right thing to do. And the only way we support them is through a contract. And the only way we could terminate the contract is if they violate the contract. And we don't have any oversight in that contract to terminate anybody. So, as long as they're giving us the reports that are required and they do the things that are in that contract, that's the only way we could terminate them. And because somebody doesn't like the way that outcome was, and none of us liked it, but if they want, they're trying to use, if they want to try to use it, as David said, for political gain or for some other purpose, I think that's extremely wrong. And I think having the opinions that are out there right now from one source is, one or two sources, is irresponsible. And we should wait and get all the details, get it to where all the information can be given to the public, and then we can then maybe make our decisions about what, if anything, we can do going forward. And I know that, I appreciate David's comments in trying to do something. I know Hopkins County, David helped me five years ago or so, Steve, you know, five years ago, they went to a one-fire station, paid, full-time firefighters to cover and to back up the volunteers. I think that was a few years back. And I don't know if that's the right thing to do. Our county's a lot more populated than them, but I don't know what the answer is. I don't, I know Caddo is talking and moving towards maybe going to a vote. Have they announced it, David, or going to the ESD?
Matt said yesterday, he's bringing it to the court, I think April the 8th, first part of April.
So, they're preparing, Caddo is preparing to do an emergency service district in Caddo Mills and in the surrounding ETJ, some of the surrounding ETJ, with the purpose of helping to not only get better firefighting, but to lower the insurance cost to the homeowners. Because if you can get a higher rating on the fire coverage, then your insurance goes down. And the hope is that those will balance out and that the public will make that a reality so they can have a full-time fire department in that area. And over the state, I don't know how many counties there are, but a lot of states, particularly down around Travis County and Austin, they all have a lot of ESD, Emergency Service Districts that cover their entire county. An emergency service district, that is its own taxing entity. So, they can tax up to 10 cents. And voters have to vote on it. The court appoints a, I believe, five-member board, and the court controls the appointees of that board. But the board is then in charge of running those fire departments. So, you know, that's certainly, that's another way this could be looked at. So, I'm, I think having some outside help with some expertise would be good for all of us.
David, do you have anybody in mind? Do you know where to start at with this?
I really, I don't. There's been a couple of my friends, there are departments that I know have recommended consultants, but I haven't spoke with anybody because I didn't know what the court's temperature was. I've had, Hopkins County was one of them. I talked to the chiefs up there. They said they could talk to us about how that was designed. I've got people that I know that work in ESD counties. They said they could go over with that. But there again, that all brings it back to my opinion, and that's what I don't want. I want an outside consultant to look at it and to say, this is what you need to do.
So, you've done a little bit of homework. So, you've got the, I think it's the SFFA, State Fire Marshal Association, it's supposed, it's an independent organization. I'm not saying they can do it, but they might be able to make some recommendations to us of somebody who has experience in multiple types of departments, whether it's ESD, whether it's hybrid, whether it's, you know, county-run. And then they also would understand the funding mechanisms and honestly, how you govern those things. You know, there's a difference in the way a professional organization is governed versus a volunteer. And so, help us get that so that some of the, you know, and I know you guys have a lot more history, you know, with the fire activities than I do, get the noise out of the system where this is, this is how we run it, this is how you govern it, and this is how decisions are made. And then the budgets are clear. Certainly, as you grow, you grow, you outgrow volunteer fire departments pretty fast when you have growth in areas, you have numbers of homes, capacity of their ability to support those things diminishes year over year when you're starting to grow. And having somebody who has experience in looking across growth and different models and what fits us, as an independent look, I think actually gives the county a chance to not let this be a political conversation, but get a good business answer for what looks best for us, and then let the people decide.
Well, I reached out when I was over at the COG for a meeting a couple of weeks ago and asked them if they had anybody that could help us with it, and they didn't. That's not anything they cover. But they did reach out for me to some other people, and I got a few contacts. And there's an administrator at Denton County who, they claimed Denton kind of went through the same thing years ago with the growth that we're currently having. Of course, they've way surpassed what we have. The fire chief, I guess, is now the administrator for Denton County, and he's, I've been given his name by two or three different people, that he's somebody we ought to talk to. And I don't know if he'd work as a consultant, but some of us, David or others, can go with him, sit down and talk to him, see what Denton went through.
Jody Gonzalez?
I don't remember the name. I've got it in my office. So...
Yeah, I would say in doing that, Judge, and I'm good, David certainly has the resume for it, from what I can tell, people up here. But we should have at least a scope of work, that whenever we say, hey, when we're talking to any individual, you know, one or 12, here's the things we're looking for, do you have qualifications to be able to show us that, yes, I can answer that question, that question, that question, that y'all are looking to have answered?
Well, how about instead of hiring a consultant today, that we get David, and Steve's been a volunteer firefighter also, I've never been, I don't have any expertise. But maybe a couple of us could go talk to some of these people and then come back with a suggestion, whether it's a consultant or something else, so we can budget for it and find out what we need, instead of just running out there and trying to go find one.
Well, and if maybe, you know, maybe some of the commissioners can, you know, send Jessica, that'll way it's not going between us all, some, you know, key points that we wanna make sure that we get answered as well.
Right.
Judge, I'm not opposed to getting some outside help. I did, it is, I think, hard to swallow the inference that we have a bunch of people out here who are trying to make political hay off of this situation. I think we have a lot of firefighters, volunteer firefighters who love this county, and they give a lot to it. And, and yes, it's an impassioned situation in some degree down there because people died. And so, it's a big deal to those people. And I think they've, I think we're kinda giving them the stiff arm, and this whole consultant thing feels like we're giving them the stiff arm, saying we're just trying to put this off. And we need to be real clear on what our intentions are with this. And I would suggest that the more we work with them, the better. They, we have a fraught history that I think the county bears the primary responsibility for, dating back to before, but certainly in 2021, I think, or 2022, whatever year it was, when we had an ESD petition. These, we had a lot of people, a lot of departments of fire association here locally, trying to look ahead and plan and put forward solutions, and they got shot down, told it was not feasible, so therefore the voters could not decide, even though they put forward a whole lot of information to show the feasibility, knowing that they needed to do that.
Were you referring back to the, when they wanted to go to county-wide ESD?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I totally disagree with that statement, because they didn't, they didn't present anything that made any sense. And their consultant there, who was an attorney that supposedly created many of these, Daniel Ray corrected him, I don't know how many times, on what the law was on how to do it. And so it was not, they weren't organized, they weren't ready to go forward, they misunderstood how it was done, and this court voted to not move forward with it. They were more, they could come back anytime they want to with a better plan and a better argument, and we'd have looked at it. But what they gave us at that time, clearly, they weren't ready. And clearly, I don't, you know, I think our county is probably too large, when all the other counties mostly have multiple ESDs, they don't have one. We're 900 square miles, that's a lot of land to cover with one department. And having more departments might be a better way to go. You know, if you could hire the right guy that could run the whole thing and keep her, or gal, whatever, to run it, maybe it could work on that big a scale. But it's, that's a big ask, to do all of that.
The point, the point is, they've been trying to put forward solutions and work with the county for some time, and haven't received reciprocation on it. And so if we're going to do anything with an outside consultant, I would strongly recommend that at a minimum, we give our local association a seat at that table in those conversations. They're the people who are boots on the ground, have been doing this work for a long time.
Well, I think any consultant that's worth his weight, that would be probably the first place he'd want it to go, or she. I don't think that would be anything anybody would want to bypass him, and I don't, I don't, we're not trying to bypass it. It's just amazing to me that we're having this conversation, because we got groups of people that are trying to get rid of volunteers, and nationwide, one of the biggest crises we have is getting volunteers anymore. And so we're gonna, you're pushing and you're wanting to eliminate a fire department that's got 10 or 12 volunteers that will lose, because they probably won't go work for anybody else. It'll probably be done, so we're begging for volunteers, and yet, there's groups, you included, won't get rid of them. And I don't, and we don't have the ability to get rid of it.
Judge, I don't understand why this one tragedy is the hot topic right now, when unfortunately we have other tragedies like this that happen across the county. Why is this one coming to light right now with so much heat?
And I understand there's other fire departments that work with Quineland are fine with them, say they do a good job. So which opinion do you wanna go with?
So I do believe there's two very specific topics here, and commingling them actually can keep us from moving forward. And so, there's the, what do we do with a county that's growing, and what's a good project look like, what's a good method look like that provides enhanced and improved services? And so I think that's certainly the one aspect that we wanna make sure we deal with. The individual fire, I think, is a standalone. I know there's history, like I said, I don't have all of that history, but as the investigation's completed and information's provided, decisions need to be made with facts, and pro arcon, just whatever the facts say. And so I think it's two very distinctive things. One, we don't have all the completion on the investigation yet, so I, and I'm like all the people that have spoken, you know, don't wanna see anything drag out, but you have to have all the facts in hand. The other piece, I will agree on the consulting, you know, looking at a bigger picture. One of the things that we do need to do is put ourselves on the timeline and not let this, you know, delay and meander over long periods of time. And so we definitely need to find people that are qualified, we need to incorporate and include people in the county. I would even go that it's beyond just our fire departments, our sheriffs, you know, our hospitals, you know, everybody that's part of that, everybody needs to understand what the needs and the demands are. And so I really think that that's, that's why that's important, but we have to put a timeline on ourselves to push that to get complete.
Commissioner Smith, I agree, and I appreciate those comments, and that's also where I was going, was that we need to put these things on a timeline, because it's dragged out a long time. And everybody's tired of it, everybody's weary of it, including the people who have to work in those environments, first responder environments affected by it, whether it's, it's, to not commingle the issues here, knowing what direction we're headed with our service generally, that's something we need to have some kind of a timeline on. But also, how to resolve the issues down there in the south, in this fire specifically, I think it's important that people know, we're on it, we all have a timeline, and it's gonna, we're gonna do something, whatever's within our power at the conclusion of that to do whatever we can to create a better environment down there. But pushing it off, I think, is probably what people are concerned we will do indefinitely.
Well, I'll restate, I mean, all we could do is to terminate their funding. They're a 501(c), they operate on their own, they can still operate even if we stop funding, and the only way we can stop funding is if they violate the contract. And I don't know that anybody's pushing it off, it's just, it's real hard when you don't have any authority to do anything. I mean, if we had the authority that we could run the fire departments, we could tell them what to do, that'd be great. But we don't have that authority. We don't have any authority or responsibility to even do what we do. But we do it because we gotta try to protect our citizens, and we try to do the best we can. And we don't get any help from the state. The state's not trying to fund any of it for us. Matter of fact, the last several sessions, they've cut our ability to even fund anything. And if the bills that are in the legislature today, if they pass, we're gonna, our hands are gonna be tied behind our back for money, and I don't even know what we'll do if that happens. We may not have a choice but go to an ESD and hope the public passes it so they can go fund it, and we don't have to fund any of it anymore. There's a lot of things out there on the table, and, you know, I'm so frustrated with the state, they got a $25 billion excess, and they're saying we're overtaxing the people, the local people are just taxing too much. What about them? Why don't they take responsibility? They're taxing us too much, nobody fusses about that. So it's a tough issue, and, you know, I want us to keep doing it as best we can. And David, you okay with going and talking to some people and trying to figure it out and come back with a detailed game plan?
That's fine with me.
And you can-
As a side note, Judge, I do think there, and people can look these up if they wanna contact their state representative or senators, I think there are a couple of bills filed to increase funding for grant programs for volunteer departments, so hopefully the state will make some improvements there.
Yep, it'd be great if it would.
And I agree, Judge, we don't have unlimited authority by any means, but we do have the power of the purse in this case, and we do have the power of the map. Those are both available to us. So we need to keep those in mind as we move forward.
All right, so-
On this, I gotta add one more thing. We got 13 departments in this county. And for the most part, all we have a problem with is on the south side of the county. And I can't figure this out. Why do we keep having a problem over here? And we keep saying we wanna unfund one of them, and that's gonna solve all the problems, and yada, yada, yada. I don't know why they can't get along over there and be adults. The way they handle their social media and the other things they put in public, this kinda, that limits the way they conduct their professionability, to me. I mean, if they're not even professional on social media, what's behind the scenes look like? I'm not saying they're not doing a good job, but it's just, it's getting old that you keep dealing with the same departments over and over and over again, and then we want a single one department out. That's the problem I have with it.
Is there not a, and I read through the contract, trying to familiarize myself, I certainly didn't see it in there. From a firefighter's standpoint, I know we have a county group, the Fire Association, is there not a code of conduct, even though they're volunteers? Is there not something that's held accountable to, that says this is behavior, both personally, department-wise, and interdepartment? Is there not anything like that, that organization would, like this, that with what they're responsible for is held accountable to?
I don't have any, I don't have any knowledge of their Fire Association rules, regulations, or how they're even created.
Gary, I think, I don't know that we have that as such in our contract, certainly it would be something to think about. The hospital does, I believe. And so I might bear looking at what they're doing.
Yeah, when it comes to a behavioral, there has to be a standard, when people have to work together. And so I think we should, I'm with you, we should go evaluate that.
All right. Any other discussion? David, you gonna go forward, you gonna pick somebody to help you, or do it by yourself? Either way's fine with me. So we'll have this, continue this discussion at a later date. Everybody okay with that?
I make a motion that I'll serve on a committee and just go talk to different fire departments at first, and then see if we wanna hire a consultant later. If you want two people on there, I'd recommend-
I would recommend we take no action today, and instead of forming a committee, you can independently make, go find and make some recommendations.
I'll go with that.
I would support that, because you can move faster independently than a committee can.
Yeah.
I don't want a committee, but if you wanted another person to help you, that'd be fine.
I'll do it, Jeff.
All right, we'll just, we'll table it and move on. Action item 10, discuss and possibly take action on the contract for professional services between Hunt County, Texas, and Allison Bass and McGee LLP for assistance with issues regarding county elections, precincts, voting tabulation districts. Commissioners, we, of course Eric McGee is with Allison Bass. McGee, they are our attorneys we use for our voting information. The state law says that we, our precincts are restricted to, I believe, 5,000 citizens in a voting box. And we just redistricted in 2020, and some of the boxes, the biggest ones, as I remember, had 3,000, 3,500. A few of those now have in excess of 5,000 people. So they have the software and the data to the demographics to be able to help us identify a new area of voting precincts, so we get in line and get our precincts smaller, so we don't have, we don't have as many voters out there standing in line for a long time. So I'd entertain a motion that we approve this contract professional services with Allison Bass and McGee.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Discuss and possibly take action to approve proposed commissary service contract between Hunt County and Keefe Commissary Network LLC. Chad, you got any comments?
Chad Stroud, I'm the jail administrator over at the sheriff's office. This is on the agenda today. Our commissary services contract has come up to be renewed. So middle of last year, we formed a committee, that committee chose the Keefe Group back in October. Now it's time to sign off on the contract. We sent the contract to Daniel Ray's office, they have reviewed the contract and approved, so I'm seeking final approval from the Commissioners' Court for the sheriff's office to enter into that agreement with the Keefe Group, our commissary vendors.
So how long have they been doing it? Six months? Or have they been doing it a long time for us?
Yes, sir. They've been with us for years.
Okay.
And the committee, you know, that we had formed, there were several other vendors that came in, and that committee ended up going with the Keefe Group again.
Okay.
So obviously, we're happy with them, if we keep going back with them.
Yes, sir, we're very happy.
Just curious, kinda based on some prior conversations, is there any performance requirements under that contract that we measure them to?
Yes, sir, I mean, they do a very good job for us, and we're very happy with the services that we're getting.
Is it really just a quality conversation about how you measure them?
Yes, sir, I mean, they've got certain things that they provide for us and that whole thing, absolutely.
Entertaining motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We're gonna strike item 12. Item 13, discuss and take action on terminating the Financial Advisory Service Agreement with Hilltop Securities Asset Management LLC and entering into a new agreement with Specialized Public Finance, Inc. Approving a resolution supporting the termination, approving a resolution authorizing the execution of a new agreement, and approving an order granting a discretionary exemption from competitive bidding under Texas Local Government Code Section 262. Commissioners, I asked Daniel to move forward on this, as everybody but Gary, I think, was on this, on the commission, when, I guess, we were part of a group called Housing Finance Corporation. And it's made up of Hunt County, Rockwell Kaufman, Navarro, Ellis, and then Waukesha Hatchie, and Duncanville, DeSoto, and Lancaster, I believe, are all the entities. And there's, Housing Finances were created back in, I believe, in the 70s to offer assistance for first-time homebuyers. Well, after 2008, that went away, after the crisis of the housing. And they, all of the, most of the Housing Finance Corporations have moved into trying to do low-income housing with, under the tax credit program. And our Housing Finance Corporation had, have already built one apartment complex in Waukesha Hatchie, and I think one in one of the other cities. And if y'all recall, we had, they had passed to do one in Greenville, out by the Home Depot. And this, the way they structure these is the Housing Finance Corporation is tax-exempt, being a government body. So they take title to the land, and then they become the developer in it, and because they're a tax entity, they don't pay any sales tax, they don't pay any property tax, and yet we get low-income complex that we get no revenue out of. Hilltop Securities is the driver of those projects with our Housing Finance Corporation. And I had, I called them to my, I asked them to come to my office for a meeting and ask them, since they're our financial advisors, why didn't they not give us a heads-up? Why didn't they not tell us what was going on in our county? And come to find out, our rep has all the people doing the apartment deal work for him, and he didn't bother to call us, give us a heads-up, tell us what was going on. They pulled the project, but I feel like that we can't trust them to tell us what they know and what's going on, that we, I don't wanna do business with them. they know and what's going on, that we, I don't want to do business with them. And Specialized Public Finance Inc., they're here today. They represent the city of Greenville, City Wolf City, GEUS, Board of Development, maybe some others in Hunt County. One of the principals has a home at Club Lake, a weekend home at Club Lake, got a membership in the country club here in Hunt County. He's part, he's active in our community. And it'd be kind of nice to have somebody that's got our best interest in mind advising us instead of people that don't have our best interest in mind. So Aaron, you, do you have any comments as far as how this all works?
Yeah, is there a 30-day, 60-day window in there for?
Yeah, introducing Armelus, I think he's been here before, but he's wanted to do all the footwork on this.
Okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
I mean, in terms of making sure, or releasing Hilltop advisors, there's basically in the contract, it's a standard contract, there's a 30-day notice window. So we would have to provide notice to them. Technically, you could keep them on, but you, if you want to release Hilltop, you just have to provide 30-day notice.
Okay.
And in terms of retaining the SPFI, that is also definitely permissible under the law. There's also the exemption, which is permissible under Section 262 of the Texas Local Government Code, which would permit Hunt County's Commissioners Court to retain them as an exemption from the normal, ordinary public bidding process.
So if, we could keep them both, but we could use whichever one we wanted to. Is that basically what you're saying?
If we wanted to.
If we chose to.
The difficulty, obviously, as you would know, when you have two different advisors competing things, then what do you do?
Yeah.
So I wouldn't advise that, but.
All right, Steve, what was your question?
He, he got it.
Okay.
The 30 days.
Okay. Any other questions?
Judge, what would the, what would the timeline be if we went out for, I don't know if I'm using the correct term, but bids on this? Because today, what we're, probably what we're doing is to enter an order exempting, you know, this, this, from, from the bidding requirement. But, so, so if we decided to go out for bids instead, how, what timeline would that, what are we looking at with that?
Well, we're not required to do that. And if we, we have things coming up that, you know, that we need to handle, then we need somebody we can deal with. And right now, you know, I don't, personally, I don't trust Hilltop.
Sure. So we are entering, so we have a resolution to terminate, and then an agreement, new company. So we're not, we're not required to go out for bids on this?
That is correct. You're not required to go out for bids.
Okay.
There's certain exemptions which are permissible for a certain specialized expertise, including financial advisors, and that's the Section 262 of the Local Government Code.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? I'll make a motion we approve, action item 13.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, Stephen?
We'll be free. I think Judge Stovall introduced us quite a bit, but there's a couple of things about our company. We started in 2008, four, five of us, we used to work for First Southwest, which later became Hilltop, so we know, we know them well. We have a number of clients in Hunt County, as Judge Stovall pointed out, which include Greenville Greenville Electric, Cash Sud, Cattle Basin, Roy City, North Hunt, Shady Grove Sud, Quinlan, West Walkeney, and some others where we are engaged but haven't yet done transactions. As Judge pointed out, I have a second home at Club Lake, I'm on the board there, and I've been doing business in Hunt County for probably 30 years. That's where I met the judge when he was on the juice board. Contract we have, I haven't seen our competitors' contract, but I'm almost pretty sure that we have lower fee schedules than they do. Fee schedule we have here is the same one that we negotiated with the city of Greenville, so it matches that. And we represent, I believe, 47 different counties. They're all listed here. And just be glad to answer any questions, and just say, first thing we need to do is reach out to the auditor and make sure there's a smooth transition. I would probably want to come and sit down with the auditor and, and just introduce ourselves and go over what we can do.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
All right, action item 14, adoption of the budget calendar for fiscal year 2526. Any questions on it?
Judge, I'd like to recommend that we amend it, or change it to schedule, and go ahead and schedule them, workshop, budget workshops in June. I mean, I can be available all, all month. But I know there's been a point of confusion and contention in the past, so I think would behoove us to go ahead and get those scheduled. And I think would also be advisable for the court to ask department heads to present their budgets to the full Commissioners Court at these workshops, so that we all together have an opportunity to ask questions and hear from them about their priorities and goals and that. And if they don't feel the need to present it, then, you know, that's, that's their choice. But I think we should at least invite them, because we, we are limited in the information we get sometimes. So if we're all here together, asking them questions, I think that'll help the process a lot, and it'll help the public to see how their, how their tax dollars are being used and managed.
We've got on there, June 23rd to 27th dates to schedule for budget meetings with Budget Officer. And that will be, I mean, we can do those in the same week as those, those days. But, you know, if there's any, any of them that we have that y'all are uncomfortable with. Last year, after I approved the budget, and I am the Budget Officer, and it is my job to present the budget to the court. And it is also my responsibility to inform you. And so what I did last year was I took the requests, I took my recommendations, and, and we sent that to every one of you for review. And I didn't have any phone calls or any comments back from them. So I don't actually see why we want to spend our time when we don't have any comments. And most of the budgets, they just ask for basically the same thing they have every year. They both, a lot of them spend close to that, not, most of them don't spend all of it, or they haven't in the past. Now, after our last budget year, I heard several of them that said, you know, it may be different going forward. So it may be a little different year to budget. So I don't, I don't see the need of it. I think it's there. We had meetings last year, you know, we, people complained that we didn't have any budget workshops, but we had three or four meetings, I know three for sure, where we posted special sessions. And on the agenda, the only thing on there was to discuss the budget. And whether you want to call it a workshop or a special session, the, the procedure for public announcements, for procedure for how the meetings run, and for the procedures for all of it's the same. It's semantics. What do you, what are you going to call it? If, if you want us to call it a workshop, fine, I don't care. It doesn't matter what it is. There's not a different definition for them. They're all the same. So I don't see the need of scheduling dates to have everybody come in and talk to us, and take up their time, and take up our time, when we have a process that has been working. And you may not like it, but it's been working before you got here, and it's worked since you've been here, until last year. And so I, that's my thoughts, Commissioners. What do y'all want to do?
To be clear, workshops were the custom of this county prior to your tenure.
The terminology was workshops.
It was much more than that.
Well, I, we can talk about that later. I'll talk to you privately about that, because there, that was, that was a whole different time, a whole different situation.
I think on it, we, I mean, I agree with the people calling in, submitting it, and you have a problem, you bring it to the whole court. But I think we need to at least make some times available for, if people do want to come in and discuss those things, that we talk about it. As a court, I feel that it's more, we don't come off as not being transparent with the public that way. You keep more stuff out there in the open. Not that we hide anything, but sometimes it's perceived that way. And if we can erase that part of it, I think that's a, I think that's a good way to go. Yes, it does take a little bit more time, but that's, you know, if that's what the public wants, then, I'm not saying we have to schedule, you know, for every single department, but we do need to make some available times, that if people do want to come in and talk, present their budget, I think we need to, to look at them.
All right. Any other comments?
So is there, is there an avenue in there where you, I hate to call it split the difference, but if somebody's asking for the same things they did before, maybe there's not a conversation if somebody's asking to grow, make changes, do something different, that's where the conversation would be, you know, made, made, you know, with, with group trying to understand what's changing in their plan. That'd be the only ones that we review. If there's no change, then there's no change.
Yeah, a lot of, I mean, a lot of the small departments, they don't change from year to year, you know. The Sheriff's Department Jail facilities, they're the, the bigger budgets that, and are more complex. The Sheriff's is always the last one I get through, because we have several meetings trying to figure out, you know, what he wants and what I think the public wants. And we do a lot of give and take. And Buddy and the Sheriff do a great job, and very cooperative in, in trying to, to make their budgets work, and generally try to stay in line with what's been going on in the past, within, in consideration of inflation or special circumstances. So, but I, I know they won't have any trouble coming. If we want to schedule a day for the bigger budgets, that's fine. But I hate to, I'd hate to come in with every department we've got that, that are elected officials or, or departments. And I take Brian there for, I mean, you got two people, and staff of him and another one, and not a whole lot of money spent there. Do we really want to take our time, him coming in and telling us a few things, and then be done?
No, I, I think if there's significant growth in a department financially, then that's the ones we ought to look at. But if they're, they're staying the same stagnant, then, then I don't see a reason why we need to, to meet with them.
Well, we can, I mean, June 23rd to 27th, we can change the wording of that from dates to be scheduled for budget meetings with Budget Officer to Budget Officer and our Commissioners Court. Is that all right? I mean?
Um, sure.
I mean, it's a week in June. I'd be happy to add Budget Officer and our Commissioners Court.
I, I still don't understand the reluctance to just, to have these. I understand, I understand the point of if, you know.
Just time.
If the budget, well, I don't think we do, I don't think our time is more important than the taxpayers' understanding how their budget is being prepared and how their money is being spent. That, that's my only thing. If, if budgets are stagnant, well, that doesn't mean that we can't ask them questions, or ask, or understand better what their, what their long, their five-year plans are. How is staffing in your office? Do you think in the next year or two, you might need an additional, some additional personnel in your office? But the flow of information needs to go through this court more. That doesn't mean they can't meet with you as a Budget Officer, have no issue with that. But the court needs a flow of information, so we can make better informed decisions, not only for this year's budget, but for next year's budget as well. And because of quorum laws and such, we, we're limited in the amount of conversation we can have outside of this meeting, as we should be. And so we need a flow of information here through this court, on, on the record for the public to see as well.
So I'm gonna take that, that you didn't read anything that we, about what went on last year, because my letter out to everybody says, I want a five-year plan, and looking for major changes in your office. Those that had major changes and all, they put it in their report. All that was sent to you. You had it to review, and if you had any questions, you were free to answer, ask and get answers. So I don't.
I don't understand how it's more time efficient for each one of us individually.
Well, it's not just us. It's, you know, it's their offices and what goes on in their offices. And if, you know, if, again, if, the bigger ones, that's fine. Let's get them in here so everybody understands it. But every department is not that big. Most of them aren't.
I don't understand how it's more time efficient for anybody involved, for five different conversations to potentially be had with a department head, rather than one here.
We'll agree to disagree, but.
But even, even if, again, it's not for me a time efficiency matter, it's that the public deserves to know these things. Yes, we received some information, but there are scanned, handwritten many times, sheets that didn't make a lot of sense. And, and then we don't know how, how did all those changes or requests get incorporated into, into the proposed budget, and eventually into the adopted budget. It's, it's a clunky process at best. And I think if we have it here, it would be much more beneficial for all involved.
Any other comments? I'll make a motion to approve the budget calendar with the change on June 23rd, 27th that we add to the end of it, and Commissioners Court. And that's a motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Action item 15, discuss and possibly take action on proposed parking at the Heritage Garden located at 2217 Washington Street. You've got a handout, they've changed it just a little bit. It's over this parking lot, it's over next to the pavilion. The Master Gardeners and I guess the ag group have been requesting some handicap parking and off-street parking for those that come to events at the pavilion and/or into the gardens. The, we just wanted to see if the court's willing to move forward and fund this project.
So this is for the, over at the garden center, and it's for.
Yeah, it's just.
Creating a parking spot.
Just on the west side. Yeah, it's just on the west side of the pavilion off of Stewart Street.
Who's doing the work?
I assume we'll contract a bid it out.
David, or Judge, I see there's a number of 16,600 on here. Is that, estimated, estimated cost, or is there a bid?
There's not been a bid. I think that's just Chris's estimate. I mean, it's, it's square foot, I mean, it's, he's got $8 a square foot for concrete, that's probably about the going rate. I assume that's what he based it on.
It, it seems like it would be a, you know, really good improvement to that area over there. The Master Gardeners do a really good job taking care of that area over there. It's a nice, quiet space.
Now that we've fixed the pavilion, it should get a lot of use. So entertain a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 16, to request permission to install two-inch water line with four-inch PVC at the intersection of County Road 2617 and County Road 2626 for temporary construction of water under the normies, normal stipulations in precinct two, requested by City of Cattle Mills.
What this is, is, this is an area where they're actually going to take over these roads eventually. And what they're doing is they're needing to run a temporary two-inch water line underneath the, this county road. So they're just going to cut it, put a four-inch casing in it to run. put a four-inch casing in it to run their two-inch line in, and then they'll compact the gravel back in the road. So I'll make a motion that we approve the construction under normal stipulation.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 17, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in the right of County Road 3401 under normal stipulations in precinct three.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 18, request to construct electrical power distribution facilities which will be in the right of Dove Drive under normal stipulations in precinct three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 19, following a public hearing, application for a change of zoning from SF 20, single-family residential district to C1, light commercial district for 22.03 acres located on 3058 FM 276 Quinlan for the purpose of creating a solar farm.
What precinct is this?
Three.
Three.
Okay, this, uh, this went before the Lake Tewocany zoning commission last Thursday night. They did make a recommendation for the zoning change. The developers and, and property owner are here, as well as their engineer, to, to discuss this zoning change. Just so that you know, this property is right on 276. It's in a, a narrow section between 276 and the lake itself, surrounded on three sides pretty much by residential, single-family residential development that is currently there. There is a commercial property that is adjacent to it that is on the, on the highway frontage. Some interesting key factors about this property, back of the property is 300, 500 feet away from the edge of the water at the greatest distance. There is 40 feet of elevation change from the highest point on this property to the lowest point of this property. There again, it is highway frontage. It's, it's also in an area that is under our proposed zoning. You know, we're going through the zoning ordinance rewrite. This area would be proposed, single-family and mixed-use development for the, the kind of mixed-use developments you get in the, in the metroplex where you've got retail and residential kind of interspersed throughout the, the development.
And maybe some multifamily or?
Multifamily, some commercial, some single-family, townhome, patio home type developments. Mixed use can be, can be all of that. Typically not a commercial type use, more of a retail type use.
But all heavy residential, both today and in the future?
That's right. Heavier, heavier residential and, uh, in, in that area and then mixed use. So.
The property to the, just to the, I guess, I guess the straw is north, just to the east of it, or, uh, 120673, is that, what is that? Is that residential? Is that a house or is there a commercial operation there? What?
Pulling my stuff out here for you.
Some Caddo Lane and Quinlan Parkway, 276.
What was the property ID again? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's one on the right-hand side, 120673.
That is a, I believe it's a, a, just a residence with a, a farm on it. But it's a, it's not a, a commercial development or anything.
Okay. All right.
Right, what, sorry, go ahead.
Are they, they putting a solar farm in here? Is this what?
That's what they're proposing. They're proposing to put a solar farm here.
So I'm, I'm curious, what's the, the zoning commission's thought as they go through? And what were the conversations around?
The, a couple of people came for public comment and they, they conversed with the developers. And, and I know that the folks who came for public comment are here, here today as well. And of course, this will require a public hearing, so they'll have their, their opportunity. There were concerns about drainage and runoff. There again, when you have 40 feet of elevation change, that's significant on a 20-acre piece of property. They were concerned about some runoff there that, that affected the neighboring single-family residential property. The zoning commission-
And the lake? The runoff would affect the neighborhood, but would it affect the lake as well?
Well, the runoff in, in the form of flooding affects the, the single-family property next to it with the concentration of water that runs across the back of the, the folks' properties. So that was, that was their concern. Developers and the, the owners went back and forth and, and tried to come up with some sort of a unofficial solution, if you will. The, the zoning commission, I don't know. I don't know what the thought process was on it. From a development point of view and the, the, the push for growth around the lake, I think that a solar farm right smack in the middle of it is a horrible idea.
Well, that's what I was trying to understand because we've got the zoning committee. They're, they're trying to create a development plan, right? Designate areas. That's why I was, for them to move this forward. I was trying to understand if there was, is there a benefit that they were seeing that, that the residents would go, okay, I get it and I want that?
I, I think they were looking at a potential benefit to, to mitigate some of the flooding on the neighboring properties. But other than that, you're, I, I'm just, I'm not sure.
So, so if we don't approve this, does that stop that, uh,
This will stop the zoning change. You can't put a solar farm in single-family residential zone.
And you say the zoning committee approved it?
They did make a recommendation for the zoning change.
All right.
But if we approve this and we're setting a precedent for future such zoning changes and requests in the future, which, you know, we don't have a lot of zoned area right now in the county, but that foreseeably could change. Not, not to a lot, but it could increase over time.
The, the zoning change requests are going to increase over time. As, as you get more and more people come in and, and want to change it for various reasons, maybe it doesn't fit in with their, with their MO or, or what they, they had intended for their property. So it, they're gonna increase over time.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of concerns about the location of this on, on the highway and being so near the lake. There's hundreds of homes around it, not all immediately adjacent, but in a near vicinity. It's, I, I just, I just don't know why. I don't know what benefit would be derived from, from this to the community.
All right. Anything else?
It does need a public hearing and they are, they are here to speak on their behalf.
All right. This time I'll open it up to a public hearing. Any of those that wish to speak, come forward, state your name and address. Man, a crowd. Y'all, I don't think it wants to. You gonna sing a chorus or what are you gonna do?
These are the, the developers. This is the property owner and this is their engineer-
Yeah, okay.
Of the project. And then we have some, some surrounding homeowners as well.
That's fine. All right. State some names and addresses.
My, my name is Marin Damza. I'm the owner of the property and I live in Dallas County.
I'm Peter Plunkett. I'm special projects manager with Construction Growth Partners. I'm from Richmond, Virginia.
Okay.
I'm Jonathan Nagle with Construction Growth Partners. Peter and I worked together. Marin asks us to be part of this project and that's when we brought Mr. Vance here with MTG.
Ben Fowles, MTG engineers.
Did you get enough of that or you need them fill out something? Okay.
So, um, yeah, so, uh, thank you for taking the opportunity to hear our, hear our-
Get up closer to the mic. Make sure, can everybody hear?
Thank you for the opportunity for, for allowing us to come here and present this to you guys. Farmers Electric reached out to Marin, the landowner, about this project. Marin reached out about five years ago and, and asked if there is a need for a solar farm on the property. And five years ago, there wasn't a need. There just wasn't enough growth. The, the demand wasn't there. Farmers Electric, Kenny Davenport specifically, reached back out to Marin back in December and said, "We've done our assessment. We think this is good. We need it. The growth is happening. We, we, we want you to reconsider this project." And so that's when Marin reached out to us and asked if we could help with it.
Yeah. And speaking to your, your point, Mr. Hutchins, there, there are hundreds of homes nearby, all, all of whom, you know, represent members of, of farmers. And, and there is a need in the grid, you know, for enhanced capacity because, you know, this is a rapidly growing area. We, you know, we understand the aesthetics of, of this thing. I mean, it's not the most scenic thing on the planet. We are perfectly willing to, to mitigate that. You know, plant something sort of rapid growing and, and obscure. You cannot see this land from the lake. We've, we have walked it several times at this point. You can't see the lake from it, which, which I, I presume means pretty certainly you cannot see it from the lake. And we're talking about a sort of medium-term land use. You know, 25, 30 years is sort of the lifespan of this thing. The other thing sort of worthy of note, you know, the, this is sort of the process working. Wayne here, who came to, to talk about this drainage issue, sort of brought to light something we were not aware of at the time. If you do single-family on this property, the lack of permeable ground left is going to drastically worsen in already, I would say, you know, semi-dangerous situation. Water that's getting very close to the back of homes down the hill. So I think, you know, the proposed land use here will, will not worsen and we intend to take steps to improve the drainage, drainage situation that exists. So, I mean, I, I think it, it, it is in fact of benefit to everyone in the area. You know, further stabilization of the grid as, as this place grows, you know, out of, you know, at, at an inordinate clip. So.
And as Brian mentioned, there is a 40-foot grade elevation change, which would be extremely expensive and, and probably infeasible for single-family homes in, in the area right now. You know, maybe in 25, 30 years, some of that situation will change.
And, and the, the econ and the, the demand, you know, probably will change subsequently as well.
Vance, can you speak to some of the drainage issues?
So in front of this property, there's a large crossing for 276 where tech stuff pushes water towards the lake. And there's also an incoming culvert from the county road to the west. The homeowner to the west that, that abuts his property, they're here. They have a, a stack of Polaroids of their front yards completely underwater and their backyards underwater. I believe with some, some drainage improvements, they, they should be able to have better peace of mind that their homes aren't going to flood through this project. You know, with the, the improvements that will come along with this solar farm, they'll, they'll be able to have better peace of mind that they won't flood in the future. You know, Marin currently has bees on the property. From what I understand, he's gonna keep bees there. So he really wants to keep it kind of as an agricultural use. This is just an additional use on top of that. In the meantime, the rezoning is for commercial as a base rezoning. It's something, you know, he might consider in 20, 30 years at the, the end of this life cycle. And then there's conditional use permit on top of that for the solar farm specifically. We have to have the conditional use on top of commercial in order to be able to do the solar.
And question, scratchy.
So how, this is a 20-acre tract, is that correct?
Twenty-two.
How, what, what kind of power are y'all expecting to generate?
Right now, the goal is five megawatts. More realistically, it's probably gonna be closer to four, four megawatts of, of power.
And this, is this one of those situations where you primarily feed into the grid during-
Exactly. That's correct.
High consumption periods? But that, that you're feeding into the broader grid, not to the immediate vicinity necessarily?
Well, we're, we're connecting right, yeah, right there.
Connecting to a substation that's, that's right up the road, which is, so it's interesting. You know, the econ of this has, has changed very substantially, you know, with the change in administrations. I, you know, while I know Hunt County has had several projects that did go and, and some that didn't, my speculation is there's not going to be a lot behind us. It, it is, you know, an extremely expensive endeavor. You know, whether or not we can in fact make the numbers work to make it, make it feasible is still to some degree in question. So, you know, again, while I understand that, that you don't want Hunt County to, to end up as one giant sort of LED panel looking, looking thing, I, I don't think that there's a great danger of, of it, you know, just being copious, solar farm after solar farm. But, but I do think that this is of substantial benefit, you know, with farmers reaching out to us saying that, that, I think they said that in the first, you know, I think they'd had about 50,000 customers for almost the entirety of their lifespan. And then in the last several years, that doubled. And, and I think they're sort of up against the wall for capacity. And I think this is a great, you know, short-term or sort of medium-term solution.
Well, that might be a good solution for today for the landowner and y'all. And of course, I agree with you that I don't, this new administration is probably not going to be as aggressive as the prior ones with green energy. But we just had a group in here a few weeks ago that was res, putting a solar farm next to residential and they did not want to look out their backyard and see a solar farm. And, and that is of concern to me. Number two, my, probably my biggest concern is we's on all of this commercial. And as you said, it may not, your project may not make. But now that opens it up to a whole lot of things that none of the neighbors may want either. So it's, you know, and that becomes permanent on it. And, and then we have no more control over it. And, and the neighbors don't have any control over it. So coming in on a blanket and asking to go commercial in the middle of a residential area is a little concerning to me.
I mean, could it be done on a revocable basis? Is that a possibility?
I don't know. Lawyer? Aaron? Lawyers? We got two lawyers over here. Aaron, you got any off the-
It depends. I'd like to look it up and see if it could be on a single basis done on a revocable term for that change. But I guess it's not, not permanent.
I've never heard of that.
Well, the, you know, last court, whenever we had the, the folks in here talking about it, and of course, certainly a lot of residents, you know, came in with, with concerns. The, the interesting thing about that, it was a large number of residents and was probably about a third of the people that wanted to on such a short notice to come in. And that's a massively smaller residential area than what this is. The number of homes and people in this area, I believe, would outnumber the, the people from that area. Any, you know, that's why I was asking about the zoning committee. I mean, you just have a couple of people that are showing up at the zoning committee with conversations because I, I don't see where they're gonna get a benefit, what, what the residents are gonna get a benefit of.
Well, I mean, in stabilization of the grid, like I said, I mean, farmers is at a point where they are reaching out, asking for increased capacity.
I didn't look. Is anybody from farmers with you today? I didn't, I, I, okay.
There's, there's a lot of other vacant land in Hunt County that, solar panels can go on. It's not on 276 in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Near a lake.
On the corner of my property, it's already commercial. Across the street, it's a commercial. There are residential only on the, on the east side and on the west, on just on the bar. Because on the, on the corner, on the south and across the street, they are commercial.
What's, what corner of your property is commercial, has got a commercial business?
If you will not mind, I can-
We brought some.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are, you know, substantial commercial.
The red building, it's a, it's a-
Metal fabricator.
Metal construction. And across the street, they are a-
Oh, it's not, it's not on your property. It's adjacent to your property. Okay, got it, got it.
Here's just, I brought another photo, kind of at the back corner of the property of some of the bad drainage issues that's, you know, causing sediment into Lake Tewocany. And this, this project, you know, would help to stabilize that back area and which would help with the sedimentation going into the lake as well.
We have, I have a, about a hundred-acre solar farm in my precinct.
Okay.
It's in, it's not in a zoned area, so we, we can't stop those.
Right. Right.
And predate them anyway. We have a lot of drainage issues caused by that because of the water running off, not being properly maintained on the solar farm where we can't. So we're constantly having to pull the ditches down there. So anyway, that's not to say that yours couldn't be built better, but for what it's worth, it doesn't necessarily automatically solve drainage issues.
We don't, we don't expect the installation of solar panels to solve the drainage issue. We intend to, along the bottom of his property, where, you know, this washout that he showed you the picture of, I mean, it is a sort of surprising situation. We didn't, you know, didn't have any idea. Like, we're talking about a swath, you know, the width of this room between what you can see is, you know, pretty substantial floodwaters coming through and causing that sort of erosion in people's homes. So what we intend to do is reinforce and, and you...
Civil engineers.
So, but I'm sorry, just real quick, those drainage issues could also be resolved by an engineer in residential developments?
I don't know that that's entirely true in this case because what you'd be talking about is occupying literally half of the land with something totally impermeable, a home. So instead of a solar panel where it's on a, effectively a piece of...
A W pile, piece of steel.
Yeah, much like a road barrier that's just driven into the ground, all of the ground is still available to absorb the water. Whereas if you have homes, you know, I would imagine they'd have to be on slabs, the soil is very wet.
You could improve the drainage with a single-family. The problem is it wouldn't be financially feasible, more than likely, 40-foot fall of this kind of drainage at the bottom of the hill. I think really what I was trying to drive home was that, you know, the owner, he has no desire to develop anything else right now. So the existing drainage issue would just remain as it is because this, this project is what's going to fund the drainage improvements at the bottom of the hill. Immediately downstream of this property is SRA property and then crosses the county road and it's into the lake. So it's kind of that last leg of drainage and, you know, without this development, you know, the owner doesn't have any intentions of trying to improve the drainage channel because, you know, he, he's not living at the bottom of the hill. It's the neighbors that are here to speak on this project that are, that are the ones that are affected by it.
All right.
We've heard the sales pitch, let's listen to the neighbors.
All right, let the neighbors come up. Thank you.
My name's Wayne Milton, I live at 209 Conti. I live at the bottom of the hill, is what they're calling it. On this 22 acres, there's a 40-foot drop. All that rain runs down right behind my niece's house. And to further show, I've got these here, I'll just start down here, you can work your way through. It shows the drainage. It shows the flooding that's behind the house. And our concern is, is behind the house, where you see the flood behind the house, you have, everybody has pictures. That's, there used to be a creek that ran back there years ago. Old boy dozed the land down and filled the creek in, which stopped the actual run of the creek from the overflow from the south side of 276 into the north side of underneath the bridge or underneath the road that fed the lake. Now the creek is starting to retake itself from actually our slough, which was built for the place, back up toward the highway. Did I put pictures in there of the way the ground is being washed back out? Now, that's back behind her house, Tanya's house, my niece's house, about 60 feet. And that's going to keep eroding out and doing something. So the solar farm, we don't, we don't mind it. Residential, you're going to have the same problem either way it goes, no matter what. Okay? We would rather have the solar farm than people back there to begin with. Just like an RV park really wouldn't work there either. Because on that, on that land, however you develop it for residential, you're going to have to go in and cut land and level land and then build some type of bar to keep it from washing off anyway. With their solar panels, the ground's going to be dried up anyway and it's going to run off which way it goes. The problem is the flooding from it. You got 22 acres and a three-inch rain per acre. How much water's coming down that hill? They have discussed and trying to work with them to make a plan to dig that back out or reroute it so the water does not flood back behind the houses again. And Gene, who owns the property up there with the red barn is, that he's talking about, is the only commercial property there. It is right up there against the highway. And when it comes through that horn from the highway, it floods his area back there back as well. And so, you know, y'all, y'all are people in charge to do what you want to with, but, you know, we don't mind the solar farm. They said they'd keep the trees, put trees around the road to enhance the looks of it. You know, it's better than having something there that's going to keep washing us away. So that's y'all's decision. I put my piece in.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, anything else I need to put in there?
Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else?
What's the lifespan of those, the solar farm?
22, 30 years.
What happens when the lifespan's done? When, what happens to the property?
Pull it up, pull it up and...
Who does that?
If it doesn't, doesn't make a sense, you know, the contract, there'll be renewal, necessary to be renewed at that time. That'll be the contract between us and the Farmers Electric.
It's a 25-year sort of ab initio contract with two possible five-year extensions, one of them reasonably likely, the second not. And after that, the panels will be pulled up.
Are the panels, just where you can haul them to the dump and put them there? Or they have, are they got environmental issues with them?
Have to be, you know, sort of decommissioned and, you know, I believe recovered, you know...
Was any part of them not friendly to the environment? Say you have a hailstorm out there and it gets on the ground, are they break or anything? Does that increase, does that create any kind of an environmental hazard?
So it is certainly not ideal for a bunch of them to get mashed up.
But it happens. I mean, it happened up in Paris just a month ago.
But this would be a tracking farm and they actually know how to protect themselves. I'm not sure if that was.
But you still, is there any part of them that are hazardous?
Certainly, you would not want to puncture one and drink it. I'm not...
So the answer's yes.
So the answer's yes, and we got a lake below it that we all get drinking water out of. The whole region gets drinking water out of that lake.
I understand that. I think the relative likelihood of, you know, a sort of mass event that damaged these things with them being trackers that turn themselves to prevent damage is very low.
Yeah, it didn't help my heartburn.
Certainly, I'm not going to stand here and tell you it's zero, but I, but I think it is, you know, these things are a lot of places and the only one that I'm aware of where there was sort of a substantial, you know, mass damage event is the one you're talking about.
So it's the same type of equipment? Does it move?
I don't believe those were trackers.
Okay. All right, is that it? Yeah, anything else?
So I did want to go back. So at the end of the contract, you take them down or the landowner takes them down?
The landowner takes them down. We are simply owners' reps. You know, it's a, it's a pretty, you know, waddlesome, complicated process. You have to, you know, find a solar engineering firm that does the design of these things. You have to, you know, find the right attorney to negotiate a PPA with farmers. It's, again, I mean, it's, it's a complicated thing and it's one where the econ of it has substantially changed. Again, I don't know how many there will be behind us in line.
What's the estimated cost of removal on a solar farm?
Right now, I don't know, maybe 100 grand, something like that, maximum, plus...
Eight?
Eight.
Eight?
Oh, no, total, for Maren's site.
The removal, the removal is very straightforward. It's just, you know, taking the panel off of their mound and then, and then pulling up. Again, you know, the sort of wavy guardrail, the W-shaped guardrail, it's simply those driven into the ground. So they're just pulled up. The removal is not, is not where the cost is. It is in getting them there.
Well, you know, 100 grand today is a lot of money and 25 years from now, who knows what that, that number will be. It might be a million. I mean, who knows what it's going to be? And that's a substantial ask of a landowner to bear that responsibility and he may not even be the landowner in 25 years. And, I mean, it's, there's a lot of ifs in this that really don't give me a lot of comfort.
The biggest if for me, and I want to take care of Wayne's drainage problem. I really want to, want to help him. And I realize, so I got one, one positive here is if we could fix that. But in the scheme of the whole, like you said, you're not even sure the project will make yet. And so, you know, at four kilowatts, right? And so, and so when you, when you take that and then you pile on the cost that you're going to have to do to fix that problem, and if the project is just at the edge of profitability, we're all going to, you know, try and make money for a living and so we're going to do the minimal on that. That's what I get worried about is how, how far that will actually go to fixing the problem. Because you're only going to be able to invest so much in that. You know, what would be the plan? Now, what's the engineering that gets approved that somebody signs off on and says, if you do this, this is the plan that fixes his problem?
Well, so, you know, we're looking at this thing holistically, you know, accounting for, certainly, these sort of site costs are the fixed cost of the thing. So at three megawatts, you know, it becomes tighter. At four megawatts, I think we can make it work. I think we can make it work with, with, you know, a substantial fix to his problem. I mean, we're, it's, it's not as iffy as we might have made it sound. I think that we can make this work.
We still have to negotiate with Farmers Electric on the final PPA and the per kilowatt hour. They have proposed a rate that, you know, we don't necessarily think is the best one and, and...
It's, we've received a sort of very preliminary sort of draft PPA. And again, I mean, that's what I'm saying, this thing is, it's sort of a complicated, you know, chess game of, of trying to figure out whether or not, you know, all the, all the issues of feasibility while doing them in a sequence so that you're not just burning your client's money with, you know, consultants and attorneys.
It's a delicate domino game. I certainly get that. And I think it kind of goes back to the judge's point earlier, is if for some reason it doesn't make, we now have something zoned commercial within not knowing what's going to go in there.
I do not have any interest to develop residential. And there'll be no, because it's not feasible, the way how the land is, to be able to say we make a nice community there because the land doesn't, and the cost to do that stuff is not feasible. And it's, cannot do it.
Financially may not be, but engineering-wise, feasible. Yeah, you can go to Rockwall and you can see them all over the place that are developed that have more than 40-foot drop in a short period of time. So, and I know, I have confidence that Vance can design something that will help the people below. But, you know, if, if this doesn't make and y'all don't continue to use Vance and you get somebody else in there and try to fix it, I don't, I don't know that I have that confidence. And we don't have, we lose control of it somewhat if it becomes developed all at once. So we don't have any authority once it's zoned to, except for plating, but if it all gets developed, there's one track. I don't think we have, we don't have building permits, we don't...
When Brian does, specific use permit might be the way to go on that, but if he hadn't received any plans, it would be necessary for that and they hadn't asked for a specific use permit yet. That would limit it to the specific use permitted just by that one permit.
I thought Vance initially requested a specific use permit with the zoning change.
Okay.
With the specific use permit, supplied, no other information other than it's going to be a solar farm, no kind of drainage plan, no, no nothing with it. So the, a 22-acre solar farm on the specific use permit, and that does not limit any kind of requirements for engineering, that does not give us the ability to say, you know, hey, we're going to need other stuff at that point in time. It just says, hey, you can put a solar farm here that month.
Yep. And we can't hold our feet with the fire because there's no planning.
That's right.
I mean, in fairness, we literally did not know the drainage issue existed until Wayne came to talk at the first...
You hadn't even been to the site?
We've been to the site. So if you, if you are standing up at the top of the hill, you can't see what is, what is going on down there. And, and we knew that we were going to keep the trees that are down there, down there. So, I mean, and, no, I had not walked down to that spot because we thought it was going to remain unaltered.
All right, I think we've had enough. Anybody got any more questions? All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Being, okay. Commissioners, I think a lot of us stated different things. What's the pleasure?
So Judge just helped me with some education. So if we make this, then the next step goes to the citizens, correct? How does that process work?
If we do it, it's over.
But I'm saying, if we said yes, it still goes to the citizens?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, it's over. We're the final one. You know, and that's what I say, I mean, the heartburn I have is we, it's not, is it not, it's not currently zoned at all, is it? Or is it just proposed on the map?
It's zoned SF 20. It's currently zoned, single-family residential.
Okay. So we change it to this extent of commercial and then we're stuck with it. I mean, not us, but the neighbors are stuck with commercial and it could end up being anything. And whether he wants to develop or not develop it, he, somebody in the future might or whatever and they'll have the free, whatever is allowed in, in commercial zoning will be on, can be on that property.
And that's a lot.
And that's a lot. So it's, you know, I think I would, I'd much rather see some kind of zoning across the front, it's general retail or some other, maybe commercial and some of it, and the rest of it probably be residential, I think is more fits that neighborhood. Certainly, I think that some of the frontage could be higher than residential, but not, not the whole thing. Anyway, so, any other questions?
Your Honor, if I may, we did request the special use permit. Literally, it would not then, you know, be available to be commercial.
Well, if we, how was it presented to the planning and zoning commission?
As, the same as it's, as it's being presented here.
Special use or commercial?
With a zoning change only, the specific use permit, there was not enough information to run a specific use permit only saying it was, you know...
Okay, got it.
Specifically a solar farm. There was no, no kind of supporting plans or, or anything for the specific use permit.
So Aaron, help, help me out. If we, if we vote no, they can't come back for two years or something, whatever it is, how many?
No, they, you can, you can deny without prejudice so that they can come back, or you can deny with prejudice and it can't come back for two years unless you're willing to waive the waiting period.
Okay.
In the example of Brian's saying, the specific use permit requires a plan, information, operating data, expert evaluation concerning the location.
So then my next question is, the zoning commission approved commercial zoning. Do we have to deny the commercial and then go back to P and Z to get and get the plans that require specific use?
Yes.
And then come back? How, what's the, how would that flow?
So if you, if you denied today without prejudice, saying, hey, you can come back and try when you get your stuff together, it would have to go back to P and Z as a zoning change with the specific use permit attached to it, at which point it would come back to y'all for the zoning change and the specific use permit attached to it with the, the more detailed engineering and, and site plan.
Now, the specific use would go away when the use stopped?
The specific use permit is tied to that property until it's undone by the zoning commission in the court and the property owners and everyone else.
So what, I mean, the specific use permit, if it's just for a solar farm and they're out there 25 years and it's no longer there... out there 25 years and it's no longer there, does it go back to what it was, residential? Or does it stay a specific use? And then they have to go in to get permitted through the, us and the zoning commission for what goes in that?
Correct. At that point in time, it would have to be changed whenever the use ceased to be, you know, solar.
It's part of the zoning district, Matt.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Judge, I think I'd like to move that we deny without prejudice, give them opportunity to go develop plans and see if those plans are improved or not.
Okay. You're second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank y'all. All right, action number 20, following a public hearing, the application of a change of zoning from E2 Estate District C1 Light Commercial District for Lot 2 of Rawhide Ranchos, located at 11655 FM 751 Quinlan, for the purpose of creating an RV park.
Okay, there again, this went through the zoning commission. They have made a recommendation for the zoning change. This property is just south of that Duck Cove area. They, between Duck Cove and the county line. Church on the south side of the property. There's an old church that I believe has become another commercial type use on the north side of the property. At the public hearing for the zoning commission, no one came out to speak against. They, obviously, to create the RV park, they would have to go through our engineering and typical standards for RV park review and development of the RV park as a, you know, as a next step in the process.
Okay, any questions?
I would just add that this isn't something that I'm always in favor of, but the particular location here, where it sits with the lake, access to boat ramps and all that, it's a reasonable fit for the area.
Okay. All right, anything else before we go to a public hearing? All right, this time I'll open up to a public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak for or against this? Please come forward, state your name and address. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action, action number 21, the amended replat of Lot 4R-A and Lot 5R-A Allen Farms in Precinct 2.
Okay. This is an amending replat. So they came through and replatted a few years ago, and whenever they built and did their improvements and put in some of their fence and utilities, they got over the property line or got onto the neighboring property. So all they're doing with this is they are adjusting that line. Acres are remaining the same on both lots. They're just jockeying that line around so that the propane tank and the fence in question is on the correct lot.
And easement moved to new locations too?
Easements have been moved as well, correct.
All right. Any questions? I guess we have to do a public hearing on this?
No, amending doesn't.
Amending doesn't, okay. All right, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 22, the final plat of Hughes Acres in Precinct 1.
Okay. So I have, after a conversation with Arnold, we've got a, the wording down as to how it needs to go to protect that Lot 1. That was one of the concerns that everyone had, was protecting that Lot 1. The surveyor is working on the fire lane for the hammerhead turnaround at the end. He had to go out to the field and get a little bit of additional field work. So he's working on that. The wording is, the note to protect Lot 1 has been approved by the attorneys. It came from the attorney's office. So I think everything's good. I just don't have the hard copies yet. So I'd like to recommend a conditional approval so that whenever we get those hard copies, we don't have to wait another couple of weeks to get them back in. And I have the wording for the note. If you'd like me to read it to you, I'd be glad to.
The wording, the proposed note on the plat?
The note that'll be on the face of the plat.
Okay, yeah, let's read that to us.
Notice regarding future subdivision, approval of this plat by Hunt County does not constitute approval of any future replat, re-subdivision, or division of the lots or tracks shown herein. No further subdivision of the property shall be considered for approval by Hunt County unless and until the existing access road providing ingress and egress to the property is improved to comply fully with the Hunt County subdivision regulations in effect at the time of such future subdivision application, including but not limited to minimum width, surface drainage, and structural standards required for public safety and access. This condition is imposed pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Chapter 232 and Hunt County Subdivision Regulations to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by ensuring adequate infrastructure and emergency access. This note shall run with the land and shall provide notice to all subsequent owners.
So that, we're waiting on that note to be on there, and then the drawing of the actual easement?
The drawing of the hammerhead for the fire lane.
Okay. All right, any questions? I entertain a motion to approval, to a conditional approval until the proper wording is placed on the plat and the corrected easement is placed on the plat.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Did you want to say something?
I did. Did you need to sign this?
I'll take them. Can you lay them right there? Thanks, bud.
Thank you, guys.
That was the amending replat.
Okay. Oh, that other one?
The hard copy, the final copy.
All right, it wasn't this one. It was the one before?
Correct.
All right, action 23, the final plat of Cedar Grove Baptist Church, addition in Precinct 2.
Okay. This one, we went back and forth. They've made a couple of changes regarding easement, setback lines, and right-of-way dedication, waiting on the hard copy, but they've addressed everything. This is kind of an odd one. We don't get much in the way of church plats, especially when they're not a church anymore.
Abandoned churches, yeah.
Yeah, kind of an abandoned church. There's still, someone's still using it, but there's also a cemetery on the property. Of course, you get into cemeteries on property, and that's a whole different can of worms. I'm sure Becky Love's dealing with cemetery stuff up in her office. There's a lot of state guidelines and all. So this plat is trying to protect that cemetery while still allowing access for anyone who may want to visit it.
A landowner can't deny them by law.
Right, you can't deny them access, but they're trying to protect this thing a little better.
Trying to give them legal access to go on the property, no matter who owns it in the future. But state law says if there's a family cemetery on a ranch or whatever, that the families that buried there has a right to go visit that cemetery.
Right. And this is kind of an odd one, you know, they're wanting to sell the church property for, and there's no telling what someone would want to use it for. They may want to use it as a church or a private school or whatever.
Vin Center or something.
This kind of puts everybody on notice that, hey, there's a cemetery on this property, and it's protected by this lot and this easement, so...
Everything on the plat's okay.
Everything on the plat's okay?
All right, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action number 24, the final plat of Brandy Kirby Acres in Precinct 3.
And this is actually in Precinct 2. Sorry, guys, typo. It's a simple one-lot plat. There we go, it's on county's most popular road, County Road 2526.
It's right there in the curve, right?
Right in the curve.
Yee-haw. All right, any comments? Entertain motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any other business today? Aaron, we got anything, executive session?
101, 2, explain the updates.
All right, entertain a motion to go in executive session under items 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at 1219. I got a new screen, guys. I hope I get it right. Oh, me and technology, we're great. We be mates.
We're up.
All right. We're back in regular session. It's 12:42. Is there anything else before the court today? Being done, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.